All right, I guess we'll get started. Maybe Jim will show up soon enough to participate. I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020. First of all, just to note, obviously, we're all appearing remotely and it is being recorded. If, for whatever reason, we can't get this to work or something goes horribly wrong and we have to abort, we will continue this hearing until our June 16th, 2020 meeting. So if something goes wrong and we can't all get back together, you can come back on June 16th and we will finish the show. But hopefully, we can get through this. So first up, which is ever more complicated in this day and age, is there anyone here that would like to speak to something that is not on the agenda? If anyone has anything? All right, we'll move along. No Planning Board minutes or A and Rs. So we'll start. And 12.7, at the end of Colonial Ave. And I understand we also have a joint public hearing with the tree warden. Oh, I saw it. George, nice to meet you. Oh, you're muted.
No, you're good.
So George, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
All right, so we have not done a shade tree public hearing, at least during my tenure on this planning board. So maybe you can help us out and lead this for this portion of our show tonight.
Sure. You can hear me okay?
Yeah, it's a little quiet.
Okay, I'm George Mulligan, the tree warden for the city of East Hampton. And I'm here to have a public hearing this evening on a property that is being developed at the end of Colonial Avenue and Plymouth Avenue. My charge here is the trees that were within the public right-of-way that will be affected by this project. And there's a small group on Plymouth Avenue and then a little larger group on Colonial Avenue. Plymouth Avenue, it's in front of 31 Plymouth Avenue. There's a group of locust trees. There's about four or five stems averaging in diameter from seven to 16 inches. Looking at the property from the road, it's the right front corner of the property, southeast corner. Colonial Avenue is the end of Colonial Avenue on the right-hand side. On the lot that's to be developed, it's from 27 Colonial Avenue. And that group, moving from west to east to the end of the street, that starts with a three-inch catalpa, small catalpa, up against a very massive 50-inch silver maple, very large tree, followed by a 14-inch red maple, pretty much a woodlot tree, just straight up in the air, the green's way high on it. And then comes the 20-to- co-dominant silver maple, 20-inch and 24-inch diameter, co-dominant silver maple. This tree is beat up pretty bad. The front leader has been busted out. There's extremely bad crotch in this tree. This is a pretty dangerous tree. It's a tree that if it had been brought to my attention, I probably would have taken down. It is kind of out of the way, but she's in pretty tough shape. And after that, last little group at the end of the street, kind of around that telephone pole there, it was a little small cluster of trees, a couple of three-and-a-half-inch sugar maples, a six-inch ash, and a four-inch American elm. And that is pretty much everything that I was able to measure out as being within the public right-of-way that would be affected by the project. As far as, so I'll give my summary of what I think about the trees and my opinion on them. However, I don't, however, I don't, I don't think it's important for you folks to carry a huge amount of weight. I think my recommendation is what you listen to. I do think that this certainly is a project that affects the butters. I have not listened to mostly all of them. I haven't listened to any of them. I think they, they're the ones here who have opinions about what's going on here and their opinions about these trees being removed. I'd be interested to hear what they have to say. In general, I don't have any objections to the removal of the trees that have been posted. However, the silver maple, I believe the silver maple is definitely a tree that should come up with discussion in the neighborhood. I'd like to hear what people have to say about it. And plus, talking to Jeff earlier, I think a couple of weeks ago, we started rolling again with this. I had been possibly told that the silver maple was going to stay. After, I was originally told a few months ago that, you know, it would definitely have to be on the list because of its location. And then I heard from the, was it the architect that I was talking to or Mr. America? I'm not sure. But he mentioned to me that maybe it might stay. And then Jeff tonight said that it's probably not going to stay. So I, I hope, I hope there's some butters here, people in the neighborhood. They've been painted up, posted with laminated tags. I hope you're all familiar with them and I'd be interested to hear what people have to say. I do think the neighborhood's interest certainly is on what they're going to end up with, you know, on that western side of the development. What are they looking for? Are there, would they like to see some trees go in there? Would they like to see some type of a buffer go in there or more of a barrier-type planting? What do you think of the silver maple? She's massive, creates a big, big, big green space in the sky, a lot of shade, like for 27 across the street. And they're all, they're all basically okay, except for the co-dominant one that's in tough shape. The rest of the trees generally, they're in, they're okay shape, even the silver maple. She's a big old girl, nothing sticking out structurally. One of the leaders, I remember going down the street quite a few years ago, one of the leaders has broken out in a snowstorm. Needs a little bit of attention if it's going to stick around. But, you know, nothing dangerous here, nothing imminent on any of this product. We're talking about accommodating and developments and hopefully, I'm looking forward to seeing what people have to say about them and about the silver maple. So yeah, that's, that's my comment here.
Great, George, thank you. I think before we open up the public comment, it sounds like there might be some question about the silver maple. Terry, do you think maybe you can address that, if that's sort of on the chopping block or not, so to speak, right now?
We're talking the 60-inch, right?
Excuse me?
We're talking the 60-inch on the corner, right?
Yeah, 60-inch in one direction, 50 in another, yeah, the big silver maple.
Okay. No, that's currently not proposed to be taken out. And the driveway is actually set back as much as we can to actually keep it out of the root zone. It looks like we had proposed, we're going to be bringing sewer in through there, so there may, would have been a manhole there, but that is actually going to change as we're going to bring that sewer line to the south and east instead. So I think that that maple actually will do all right with, you know, minimal impact.
Okay, I'm happy to hear that. So my specific concern then, if that tree is going to be saved, is that I'm not, you know, the lot looks, it's, the lot looks tight to me, so I'm not familiar with the workings, obviously, and haven't gone into this project per se. But then I would appreciate it if, when it comes to contractors to be working in there, that, you know, they can give as much space as possible. If they're going to start grubbing ground or working around it, I'd appreciate it if they can give it as much leeway as possible and not mess with those roots. I know it's a tight spot and then I don't know where your driveways are going to be, but that would be my concern there. Take best care as you can if you're going to, to minimize the root damage around there.
Yeah, I would say that we can easily, you know, certainly put up a, you know, a protection zone around it to try to minimize impacts that way.
That sounds good.
Okay, so that's, that sounds good news if the silver maple is not a topic for this hearing. Before we open it to the public now, any Planning Board members have any questions, either based on what George said or Terry offered? Okay, so Jeff, do we want to go down a list of neighbors again and handle questions that way?
Yeah, I think that it's a little cumbersome, but I think that's how we did it last time. I think it'll work okay. So I, from the participant list, I have a list of names. There's nine people. So I just want to call off a quick list of numbers so you can know when you might be up to say something. And my understanding right now is people can unmute themselves. That's my understanding is how this will work. We tested it out last time, but, so I'm just going to go through the list and then if you don't want to speak, you can try to pass or if you can come off mute and just say that you don't have anything to add, that would be great. So the list is going to go just in this order, just the order that I jotted names down. So number one is Tina Gogger. Two is David Gogger. Three is Leslie Tane. Four is Kevin Mulligan. Five is Meg Kennedy. Six is Christine. Seven is Kirk. Eight is Barb's iPad. I don't know if that, we'll cover that in a second. And nine is Sarah McAlpin.
And so just, just a reminder, everyone, so we're going to focus these comments just on the issue of the trees. So we are going to get into the rest of the project once we conclude the tree shade, shade tree hearing. So let's try to focus these comments just on issues related to the trees.
Great, so it was first Tina and then David Gogger.
Yep, so I'm showing you a picture of the trees that do provide shade to the area. You can see these are very healthy trees that do provide quiet and shade to our quiet little end of our street. Yeah. I'm sure that Meg will be showing you some more pictures, but it would be a shame to have any of those removed.
Tina, Tina, which of those trees are marked for removal? Do you know?
I think all of them.
The part that she's showing now is where one of the water gardens are going to be installed on their side, wherever the variance is.
When Meg talks, I think she's number five, she'll have a better showing of it. She can show you the markings of the trees.
So is that in the town right-of-way?
That's, yes.
That's her yard.
I think if it's okay for orientation purposes, I don't understand the orientation of the Goggers' view.
We're 29 Plymouth Ave. We're right next to the butter to the property.
We're on Plymouth Ave.
You're looking over the roof of 31 into the wood behind it.
Yes.
That's correct.
Right, so my-
Where you cannot see through.
Right, right, but my, my charge is the trees that I mentioned at the beginning of the hearing that are posted with a laminated piece of paper and have white dots on them. And those trees that are under jurisdiction of public shade tree hearing are within the 40-foot right-of-way of Colonial Avenue and Plymouth Avenue. So 20 feet from the, generally speaking, if you stand in the center line of Colonial Avenue and Plymouth Ave, Plymouth Ave, and pace 20 feet out from the center, those, that's the public right-of-way, those are what my charge is here this evening. My charge is not the trees that are in the lot that's going to be developed or removed.
No, a lot of those trees that are marked have, have the white markings on them, these trees right here. These have orange and down this end have white.
I have, they do not have my markings. My markings is a group of locusts in front of 31 and that is it on Plymouth Avenue, southeast corner of the Plymouth Avenue lot.
Which is down this way.
That's right. If you stand in front of 31, standing in front of the front door, you look to, you look to the right of that house, street side, right front corner of that lot, street side is a group of locusts. There's four or five of them. They're seven inches to 16 inches in diameter, they have white dots on them. That is my only charge on Colonial, on Plymouth Avenue. That's the only trees that are marked.
That you're looking to have removed or saved?
Those are the ones that are being asked by the contractor to be removed as tree warden, because they are, as tree warden, I must hold a public hearing to give, to give a public opportunity to speak on the request for the removal of that group of locusts there, just that group of locusts. That's my only charge. The work that's being done in the lot is not my jurisdiction.
Okay, I want to ask you this. If the development is down from the end of Meg's property towards Colonial, why are you removing these trees down this end?
So I'm going to jump in just for a second. So I think, I think we want to, I don't know if David's going to speak. I want to make sure we get through the public comment and then I think what I want to, what I want to do is have Terry then pull up the map. I've made Terry our co-host, but I, we just need to separate, you know, the applicant's somebody's, the applicant's requests from the tree warden's responsibility. So I want to, I think we understood the concerns, Tina, and I think if we move forward, David, do you want to speak to anything different? I'm trying to unmute you, David.
Unmute. Okay, so the, the only concern I have, Jeff, is where Tina was showing the, the trees that were standing, and it's not a very wide area between the line to where the, the driving range is now. If they cut that, if they clearcut all those trees down, I'm going to be sitting here on my deck and I'll be able to see everybody pulling into Burger King and McDonald's. And then when they, if they build the pot farm out there, I'll be able to get to watch the workers come, come in and out and go to work and stuff. There will be nothing to stop. I know they're putting in a buffer six feet, but six feet ain't going to do nothing, you know, like a six-foot fence. It's going to be a clear, clear shot all the way up to F.L. Roberts if they clearcut that land. And I don't know, I was reading some of the articles in, in the town bylaws and stuff and I thought I read something where under the special zoning permits that they weren't allowed to clearcut the land. Am I correct on that?
The language says that they shall minimize.
So I just want to clarify that I think my understanding is that the area of your concern is probably outside of the tree warden's jurisdiction. So the tree warden is dealing with the trees that are immediately adjacent to Plymouth and Colonial. So it's not that this won't come up again, but I think we want to move forward with just looking at the, the trees that are removed in the right-of-way. And I think we'll circle back to this discussion. I think the discussion of the, the site work came up last time.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that's an important thing to us. I mean, that's, that's great living down here and to cut all those trees down would be a shame, you know?
Yeah, so like the chairperson said, we'll come back around to the overall site development. Jesse, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, so let's just make sure we're focusing. This is a discreet part of this whole process, which is just these public shade trees that the tree warden has responsibility over. So let's make sure that when people are commenting at this phase, that we're just talking about those specifically marked trees that are right off the public right-of-way. We're going to, as part of our role on the planning board with this special permit, we're going to have to get into the consideration of trees that are on-site as well, but that's a separate process. The first part is just these designated trees. It's a little, it's a little wonky, I know, but if we can try to focus on that, then we can get George's, you know, box checked so he doesn't have to worry about that anymore and then move on to the other stuff.
Yeah, my jurisdiction does not involve trees on private property, simply put.
Yeah, I'll interject in regard to, the plans have been updated, so the impacts at Plymouth are actually likely not, possibly not going to involve those trees. Maybe I could just show, show the updated plan in that regard, because before we had, the driveway was coming out on Plymouth and would have required coming through that right-of-way area. And now we're not doing that.
Okay, that could be helpful, Terry. If you, if the current plans maybe limit the scope of what needs to be removed, then that's even less for us to deal with tonight.
Okay, I can share that. So at this point, if you look in here, the only thing that's going in is the infiltration basin here, but the end of Plymouth Avenue is not necessarily getting disturbed. The one thing I will say in terms of that area is that the, the DPW would like the sewer to be brought in to the new manhole that's at the end, right about there. So the sewer line would come right along the edge of the property, right in this area. It could come across this manhole. I'm not sure exactly where the locusts are sitting. I'm suspecting somewhere in here. Does that sound right?
Is that, is that a lot line to the left of your, right there? A lot line, lot line corner?
Yeah.
Yeah, right there. That lot, that lot line corner, just inside the radius there is where those locusts lie.
Right in here.
No, the one out, that, that one there.
And I would, I would guess we could probably avoid it. We could probably come through and over to the manhole.
And as far as those locusts are concerned over there, I mean, I'm pretty, not looking at what the adjustments have been made here. I think, I think it's, I'm kind of ambivalent about it. If they can stay, fine. I think it's, I think if the folks at 30 are here, they can chime in as to what they'd like to have and want to leave them. I have no problem with that at all.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly try and leave them.
No, what, 31 thinks?
Right, I mean, I, the question that I have, sorry, Jesse, is where the, what I, what I heard from the previous speaker was the concern about where the infiltration basin is, the bold line to the left of the infiltration basin, that, that represents site clearing. I think that was the area that the Goggers were concerned about in particular. I, I'm a little, I'm a little uncomfortable with the idea that, you know, we don't know where the locusts are, we don't know where the sewer line is going, and we probably can save them. I don't, I don't know that we have enough spessess.
Jeff, is whether or not the sewer line needs to go through there.
So, so then Terry, I mean, are you, just because thinking about what, you know, our responsibility is here with George tonight, are you then not seeking permission to remove those locusts because you think you can get around it? And if you, turns out you do, you want to come back?
I don't know exactly where they are. You know, we have some definite flexibility how that sewer line is run, but I'm not, I don't know specifically as the, those are not located on our plan.
There's 31 here, Jeff. Are the folks at 31 Plymouth Ave here?
Yeah, I think-
I think that's Meg Kennedy.
Yeah.
Hello? Can I hear, can I hear your comments on those locust trees, please?
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, and I did try to walk out there. I don't know if I'm going to have internet all the way, but, um, those are being choked out.
Meg, I can't hear you anymore.
Maggie, can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I was trying to show you the tree. Those trees are being choked out by several different vines, including poison ivy, which has taken over a lot of the trees here. I am not opposed to having those taken down because I believe within a short time, and I'm no tree arborist, so forgive me, I'm overstepping, but yeah, I'm not opposed to those. They're quite large and they are being attacked by several vines, including poison ivy.
Couldn't the vines be cut down and-
Yeah, it could be maintained by the town, definitely. Sure, it could be saved for the owner.
Because that, that, those trees are not far away from where the manhole on Plymouth Avenue are. They're almost-
Which I don't know if that's going to affect the manhole either.
Across from the, or diagonally across from the trees there, so.
Okay, I'm going to mute some people here. I just muted Ms. Kennedy. So Jesse, I have a question. You know, this is, we should try to keep going through the list, but what's apparent to me is that we need some kind of plan to show where the trees are, where they are currently and where they're proposed to be removed, because this is, you know, it's not clear what's happening with the tree removal proposal.
Yeah, it seems a little bit vague right now.
The next person on the list was Leslie Tane, I think. Leslie, you're not muted right now. Do you have anything to add about the tree trees?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Okay, thank you. The next person was Kevin Mulligan.
Hi, Jessica, Kevin Mulligan here, 24 Plymouth. We, no real additional comment, just, you know, maintain as many trees within, healthy trees within the right-of-way as possible.
Yeah, I second that. I'm happy that silver maple is staying, walk by that often, and I was very sad when I saw it was marked, so I feel a little better right now. But yeah, keeping as many of the healthy trees as we can, that would be great.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. The next person was Meg Kennedy. We heard from her. The person on the phone is Christine. Okay, the next person was Kirk, Kirk Peterson. Hi, Kirk.
Okay, Christine doesn't have a microphone, so don't, you don't have to ask her in the future. Yeah, I'm in favor, of course, of saving any healthy trees, particularly the big maple, so that's great. Besides that, I don't have anything to say right now. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. So can I sit her up for a second, Jeff? So I'm a little confused if we're not, George, if the four locusts are sort of on their own, they may or may not need to be taken down and the silver maple is off. Which, which of the other trees are we talking about that were marked?
Yeah, they're, they're very small and inconsequential. You know, they're on Colonial Avenue and after that, it's a, you know, it's a 14-inch red maple- you know, it's, it's a 14-inch red maple, 20, 10 feet down the road, 15 feet down the road. It's a woods, woods tree, just, you know, long and lanky, way up in the air, the green's way up high. You know, there's nothing, you know, there's nothing unique about these trees coming into woods as, you know, as a shade tree. It's not like, they're not unique, just a wooded tree that happens to be within a public right of way. And in my opinion, holds nowhere near the weight that a silver maple would hold to that neighborhood. That, uh, the, the, um, you know, so, yeah, and then the next group is just that co-dominant maple. It's, it's the front leader is totally dead, busted off, it's got a bad crotch in it, and things opening up. The backside's gonna fall into the woods. Again, it, it should be removed. And then there's a, then there's that group of three or four small, three and a half to four inch, five inch size, ash melon and maples just kind of hanging around a telephone pole down there. And, um, again, nothing special. How, how, you know, these are, you, like, like these folks were talking about, you know, the green barrier, trying to save that, what they came in the lot. You know, I walked back and forth just to look, I, I've looked for certain little species that could be saved up against these homes, and I didn't find a heck of a lot of nice stuff that run, oh, close to the homes. Uh, that's not to say that there's an substantial amount of greenery there. There is, but like, what I was looking for was like, the end of Colonial Avenue, there's a couple three and a half inch sugar maples. You'd pass them by, you wouldn't think much about them. But sugar maples, they're nice shape, young, that lot gets opened up, they'll have the chance to turn into something. You know, so that's the type of thing you could say, well, would you want to leave one of these? You know, could the contractor leave a couple here to give these things a chance to go and, and leave a little more greenery? But, but again, I'm not, I'm not privy at all to the development of the site, what has to, you know, what we're moving here for earth. But that's, that's it. That, that's the scope of, of what we've been talking about. For me, uh, basically in summary, uh, the neighborhood sounds like it's glad the silver maple's staying. I'm glad the silver maple's staying. The locusts are nothing special. I was, I was looking for leaves, the leaves, they pop late. I went down there quite a few times. They're kind of struggling anyway. Uh, they're wrapped up in vines for sure. Poison ivy's in there, pretty heavy. Um, again, I would have no problem if those folks would like to keep them around, keep them around, but nothing special. And certainly, if the sewer intercept, uh, needs to go through there and do it right, uh, give that, give the lady, pull, pull them out, take them out, do the job right, and offer her a tree, a two, to go back in. They, uh, it's not, I, I, I talked about asking for two or three being planted down Colonial Avenue after the silver maple, putting something in there. And the lady on the corner at 31 asked for a couple of trees to go in that radius or in front of that reaching pond of the building, and they'll be much nicer looking and be in, find much better shape. So, yeah, in, in, in summary, we're gonna save the silver maple, we're gonna use some judgment on the locusts, and, and everything else is nothing special, and I'm okay with it being cut.
Thanks for the question.
Yeah.
So if we do, if, if, if the proposal ends up being, or how do I reword this? So if, um, is it possible to, if these existing trees are not really all that spectacular, um, that the applicant could propose to take the trees down and then replace the trees within the right of way with more, um, you know, s- nice trees, um, specimen trees within the right of way? Or would, would, would that be something that would be, uh, the town wouldn't want? Because then they'd have to maintain them.
Well, yeah, he offered to do that in my first meeting with him, and he asked me about spacing, and how many I thought could fit in there. Basically, if the silver maple stays, so now you're running the space from there down to the end of the road. Uh, driveway consideration, again, I don't know placement, but yeah, he, he, he offered, they offered.
Within the right of way, so not on their property, but they could be placed.
Yeah, within the right of way. Put two in there, three in there, whatever, set back as far as possible off the edge of the road. That's fine.
Terry, is that something that you folks are comfortable with?
Oh, we've already proposed that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, Jeff, did you make it all the way down your list, or are there other people that? We did not get to.
No, there was two. I just want to make sure we go through the list. Um, and I apologize if we covered this last time, but there's one called Barb's iPad.
Hi, that's, uh, Jim Coughlin.
Okay, and I was gonna get, I was gonna add you too, Jim. Yeah, and then there's one more person for that.
Yeah, and, um, I, uh, I want as much of a bus buffer as possible. Um, to the end of the street, I've got the same concerns as the goggers and some of the other neighbors. Um, but is, if there's a, if there's an appropriate buffer, I'll be happy.
Jim, can you just give us your street address for a record?
22 Plymouth Ave.
Thank you.
Great, and then the last person, thank you, Jim, and then the last person on the call that I have listed was, uh, Sarah McAlpine. Before Sarah talks, I think you, is, is Zoe Ingram, was that not someone that, or is that another applicant that's gonna speak? Or is that a resident?
The, the planning board clerk, actually.
Thank you, sorry.
No, it's okay.
Sarah, do you wish to speak for the, this great tree portion of this?
Hi, I do not have anything to say about the shade trees, except just a general preference that, um, as much be kept as possible. It doesn't need to be removed.
Thank you. Okay, so George, it sounds like based on your recommendation, it's that we've, we've pulled the silver maple out of the group that's in play. The other ones are relatively insignificant, and you would approve taking them down. And the locusts, you would probably approve taking them down too, especially if the applicant has been willing to replace them with something else afterwards. Is that fair?
That's correct.
Okay. So Jeff, any idea what we have to do here as far as our vote? Are we just?
Um, the only, the only question that I think would be helpful to clarify is what, um, Terry said about how they already proposed the trees, and so are they shown on the plan? Is that the trees that you have shown on the plan? Is that, is that how you were referring to that?
I can show you what we have at the moment.
Because I think that, um, you know, would be part of this, this, this vote, as well as the protection around the silver maple.
Well, currently, uh, these trees are proposed to, to, uh, I think those are maples, red maples. Um, October Glory, uh, red maples, uh, here and here. Then we've got another one, uh, for the property. And, okay, down in the corner, we don't have anything proposed here. Um, but you know, if, I, I imagine we could add another tree down in here if we end up taking out, then needing to take something out.
And do you have the size of the red maples when you plant them? I thought I saw that listed there.
That's the two, two and a half inch diameters, would be about six feet tall.
Okay, and I think just while we have the tree warden, you know, with us, is that, um, George, is that a reasonable size of a, of a planting to, to have come in and repl- to, please removed?
Yep, two, two to two and a half is pretty standard for young stock. It's what I put in on the street, the little that I do, but yep, pretty standard size. And a choice of red maple's good, uh, because they're much more tolerant than the sugar maples are along the streets. Sugar, sugar maples are, over the last few decades, are not doing well anymore with salt and whatnot and environmental stresses. Red maples hold up much better, so yep, I'm, I'm good with that.
So Terry, are you imagining, um, if you take those locusts down on Plymouth Ave, that you could replace them with, with one of those red maples? Is that sort of comparable?
I would say, uh, yes, unless Wally feels differently, but I would say that wouldn't be a problem.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, the, the DPW, the interim DPW director's letter stated that the primary ca- risk to the sewer system in his assessment was the roots and the root infiltration into the system. Would, would adding a tree at the sewer manhole and the, along the sewer line that's gonna connect into that sewer manhole, add risk to the roots infiltration, or is it far enough away that it will not impact the sewer manhole?
It, it would potentially, depending on how close it is to the line. Um, you know, the roots will eventually be generally the, you know, extending. I think George can speak to that more, but, um, you know, generally, the roots extend the, the canopy of the tree and.
That you're applying, yeah. Yeah, I guess be my only concern about that is, you know, adding a tree near a manhole, um, when root, root issues are the main risk of this collection system. I don't know what the answer is.
Yeah, proximity to the line, it's important. Just like Terry said, it's important. The closer you get, possibly more trouble you'll have down the road. Um, but, uh, so, you know, maybe one, one tree, and then after you see what, see what, see what you have for space there. Where, where's this, where's the line gonna run? How are the, how are the folks at 31, what kind of room do they have left? Maybe you can squeak the thing back in a little bit. It doesn't necessarily have to go, it doesn't have to satisfy me by going in the public right of way. I'm more, if, if the butter would like to have a tree, that tree, and she's happy with moving it back away or onto her property, I'm perfectly fine with that. You know, you don't have to satisfy me so much in this circumstance by putting it in the public right of way. If she'd like to have that tree back on the property a bit, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, I guess at this point, we're voting on the request to remove those trees, and I guess, are we given like a conditional approval on the locusts? Does that make sense, George? That we'll approve it if the applicant needs to remove those four locusts, that they can, but, because it sounds like they don't know for sure.
Yeah, you're just gonna, you're gonna give them conditional proof, probably, you're going, you know, faith and judgment, judgment, you know?
Yeah.
We've all, we're all on the same, we're on a ballpark here. Butter's in agreement. Do, do the best you can, right? It's gotta go, it's gotta go, and we get something new in there.
Okay, um, I guess I will take a motion then from someone on the planning board. We don't have Mr. Zarvis here to make all the motions. Someone else is gonna have to do it.
But the motion is what, to, 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 um,
To allow the removal.
To allow the removal of all trees but the 60-inch sugar maple, or wait, uh, not, not sugar maple, um, silver maple. Is that right? And replace with the proposed trees on the plan, but also consider adding another red maple to the Plymouth Avenue side to replace.
The locusts, if those need to be removed.
Should they need to be removed. That's a, that's a wordy motion.
Jim would have done it so much smoother, Chris.
He would have been practicing for a few minutes, so.
I second.
Okay, so we got a second. All right, we gotta do our roll call, uh, vote, vote here again, so.
Can we just re- I'm gonna try, can we reiterate that? Yeah. Just for, um, so I had, um, you know, the, to allow the removal of all the marked trees except, um, the 60-inch maple.
Yep.
Um, and requiring replacement, um, with three red maples as shown on the plan. And one additional red maple on Plymouth Avenue in a location to be determined.
And assuming that they actually need to remove those four locusts.
Good.
And then we have a second from Brenda, so, um, a call off the list, Jesse Belcher-Timmy, hi, Chris Cockshaw.
Hi.
Uh, Brenda Salier.
Hi.
Austin Sanders.
Hi.
Uh, Harry Schuman. Unmute yourself, Harry.
Where is he? I don't even see.
There you are.
There he is. Oh, say it again.
How do you vote?
Hi.
All right, thank you. George, do you need anything else from us on this part?
Well, did you do Austin and?
All right, excellent. Thank you, George. This was very helpful and informative.
Yep, and I, I thank you.
All right.
Before we lose George, actually, sorry, um, what I would like to, I have notes for a condition. So I think a condition of the approval will be to add, um, protection to the silver maple. And my question was gonna be whether that should be, you know, subject to, you know, review by the tree warden. Or, or George, can you give us language that, you know, you or a subsequent tree warden would be able to go out there and say that's adequately protected?
Well, what I, what I would like is, uh, just a simple phone call from, uh, from Terry or the contractor. What, you know, in this, this, what's important on this tree is to use some type of fencing out away from the tree. You notice in a lot of places, they'll take, uh, they take two-by-fours, put them on younger trees, wrap them up with fence or whatever. We're trying to protect the ground around the silver maple and protect the roots. So I would just like to have, you know, temporary fencing put at a distance away from the trunk of the tree. So, you know, vehicles aren't going over it, construction equipment isn't moving over it, and, uh, they can just, you know, I, I would just, just give me a phone call to check with me when they're ready to go and set up, and, and I just see where, that we're on the same, because everybody's happy where it is, and we, uh, yeah, so.
That's helpful. So I think we, we will craft it so it says prior to any site work. Um, you know, the, the tree is properly protected, um, in consultation with the tree warden. And, and I'll make a note in this decision that it's really about the ground, and the expectation is that there's some separation from the tree.
Right, because just, just wrapping around older mature trees on construction sites, if you've seen that happen, serves no protection to the tree, because it just does, you're not protecting the root zone. We want to get as much root zone protection as possible here.
Okay, that's helpful.
Yep.
Um, okay, so then, uh, we're done with the shade tree hearing. Excellent. Now we can move on to the rest of the public hearing, um, related to the project. Last week, or two weeks ago when we were here, there was a lot of discussion about the sewer and water stuff. So we did get a comment from the interim director of the DPW, uh, that I just want to read into the record here. Um, so this is from Friday, May 29th. Uh, "Good morning, Jeff. The additional load on the Colonial Plymouth Mill Street sewer should not pose a capacity problem for this area. We recently installed a terminus manhole at the end of Plymouth Avenue to allow for more complete maintenance, flushing slash root control on the sewer system there. We will require the sewer laterals for these new structures to tie directly into this new manhole at the end of Plymouth. Water service connections for this project can be made on Colonial Avenue. The additional domestic water flow will assist with water quality as Colonial Avenue is a dead-end main. It is important to note that roots have been the cause of problems there and not capacity issues. The additional sewer flow may actually help slow the root growth. We will be starting a bi-annual root control treatment in this area this year, and we'll move it up on our periodic flushing schedule regardless of whether or not this project is ultimately approved. Please contact me if you have any additional questions. Thank you. Gregory R. Nellman." So that seems to be somewhat promising, at least with respect to some of the issues that were raised, um, by residents and concerns at the last hearing. Terry, I guess starting with you, I, I think you mentioned before that you had already had conversations about moving that tie-in down to the Plymouth Avenue, and that, that's not a problem?
Yeah, I always spoke with Greg, um, you know, the preference would be as a, you know, is to have one actually tie-in on Colonial and the other come to Plymouth. Um, but, you know, we can coordinate with him on that.
Okay.
So.
Okay, um, we did not receive any other comments, um, or questions in the intervening two weeks. Um, but I am happy now, first of all, if there's any planning board members that have any questions or comments that they'd like to ask the applicant, or anyone else?
I do. Uh, is there a specific reason why you would prefer one, um, to go to Colonial and one to Plymouth? Is it a gr- a grade issue for the outlet?
Uh, no, it shouldn't be, uh, it won't be a grade issue. It's just a, a lot of cross-country run for that house at the end of, um, Colonial. Where it would be much, much simpler, just to tie it right into the sewer manhole right there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the planning board or planning department? Any other questions from the planning board or planning department?
I have, yes, I have a question, so. I'm, I would like, I guess I would like to have a discussion about whether or not there is a need for vegetation to be planted on the side facing the Tasty Top property? So that, that's what I had heard a lot of concerns, you know, we, we talked last time that the site by and large will be cleared due to the grading requirements. And then the infiltration basin gets, and then that was a concern that we had heard. And I, I want to, I guess, just understand that the planning board members have questions or concerns in that. And there are a couple of findings that along the way, you know, we, we will have to kind of get into with respect to the, the section of the zoning that this falls under. So, you know, there's two real elements of that section and I can, I can, I think I can pull them up in a minute. But there's, you know, a buffer strip. And then there's a discussion for sort of minimizing the tree removal on development. So I don't know if Terry can pull up that plan again. That, to me, was an open question that I think it would be good to have a little discussion on.
So currently, the, the grading on the site extends pretty much across the entire property in order to accommodate the rain garden and the required infiltration basin. So basically, the entire site's going to be disturbed all the way, all the way around, with the exception of that eastern corner of the property. At this point, there is, there is a significant strip of, of vegetation from this chain link fence over that is, you know, I believe about 30 feet wide on, on the far side. And, you know, as, as we proposed already, what's being proposed currently is a row of arborvitae along this southwestern edge, along with some, some internal ornamental plantings.
Okay, and so just to facilitate this discussion a little bit, Terry, if you don't mind stopping that screen share, I just want to make sure that we see the section of the ordinance that the planning board has to kind of balance this against. So I'll pull that up as soon as, okay, so what I'm, you know, part of the process that the planning board goes through, you know, in, in determining whether or not to approve this, is this sighting and layout requirement paragraph here. So, you know, it's, you know, it's intended to be integrated into the existing terrain and protect abutting properties and community amenities, building site shell, to the extent feasible, you know, minimize the use of wetlands, steep slope, floodplains, hilltops. So we've covered that, that you're outside of the jurisdiction of any resource areas. Minimize the obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations. You know, what I heard was that this isn't necessarily a scenic view, it's a little bit more of a concern of seeing, you know, elements of Route 10. Preserve unique natural or historic features, which I don't necessarily think we have. Four, which is what we've been talking about as minimized tree vegetation and soil removal, removal and grade changes. And then five, you know, actually it's six, but minimize open space retention. And then six was the one I, I didn't want to get too far in the discussion without making sure that we look at number six, which is screen objectional features from neighboring properties and roadways. So, you know, that's kind of where the planning board, I, I feel like the planning board needs to have, have some discussion about whether you think there's merit in providing screening at that back end of the property or, or whether it's not, you know, really relevant in this case.
Brenda, do you have a question?
Yes, so Terry, I was curious, in your prior plan, when you were doing the three duplexes, it looked like, I think there was one infiltration basin or rain garden. What was, I'm just wondering about the use of the space there and can you do without one of those, since the prior plan only had one of those? So.
The reason I have to do two of them is the area where the rain garden currently is was a dumping area for, for kind of the poor materials and, and somebody's yard waste and whatever, and it's not suitable for infiltration in that area. So the infiltration areas, it's a sandier area that will be much more accommodating for, for infiltration purposes.
So if I can continue, can you do without the rain gar, I mean, I know rain gardens are wonderful, but can you do without the rain garden and just not disturb that whole section there? I, I did a little bit of a walkthrough and it, it's, it's pretty wooded there. And if, if you could keep that, that might provide more of a buffer to the property towards the east.
We, we need, we need the rain garden.
Okay, right.
Matching pre and post development runoff.
Okay, thank you.
Terry, how about the necessity to clear that whole site? I mean, is there stuff on that backside that you could either preserve? Or if you had to take it down, you could replace with something else afterwards to help sort of fill out that buffer with the lot next to it and Route 10?
Well, I mean, you know, that, that Route 10 is actually to the north, northwest.
Yep.
What this looks out to is, is the driving range and wooded area beyond that, if you look directly across there.
Well, and it does, it does look out onto those businesses on Route 10 too, though, so it's, it does.
Yeah, there, there will still be, be a buffer of trees between the, this and that. I mean, you could plant some, I don't know how much benefit you would get out of it in terms of it. You're going to have the buildings themselves are going to block a lot of the view going that way. So I'm, I'm not sure how much benefit you would get, I guess.
Chris, did you have a question?
I do, yeah, thank you. So the, on the plan, you have, you show a chain link fence on the abutting property that, in that 30 foot area, that, that strip of land. Is, is that an easement or is it, is there a reason why there's a chain link fence 30 feet off of the property, property line? Or is, is this, is that chain link fence, could that in the future be removed by that property owner and that strip of trees be removed by that private property owner?
That, that, yeah, they, I mean, that would be their right to, to remove that. The chain fence is the end of the, is the edge of the grass area out there.
Okay, so it's not like that's a drainage easement or something, or there's, or the town owns it, it's actually still owned by the, the driving range right up to your property line?
As far as I know, yeah.
Yeah, that's some of the tension here, Chris, is that there, there is some protection over there, but there's nothing that requires that to stay. So it's sort of.
No, just confirming that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Brenda, another question?
Yes, please, Terry, I'm wondering if the developer would be open to doing some tree plantings between the basin and the garden that over time would, would become a small wooded area.
I, I can let Wally answer that.
Mr. Merrick, are you?
I mean, if, if the abutters, if that addresses the abutters' needs.
This is Wally, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yes, I'd be, you know, I'd be, you know, to plant a few trees in between the rain gardens would, would be doable.
I'm curious to know what the neighborhood thinks about that solution.
Would there also, would there also be a possibility to, to plant behind unit one and two, up to the rain garden along the property lines? Not that it will impact the drain, the drain downspout, but just to the east of that along the property line, would that be something the owner would be, that applicant would be amenable to?
We'd have to look at it once we started construction. I don't know how much room between unit one and the property line, there's not a lot of room.
There isn't, but, but as it, from the corner, from the back corner to the rain garden, I'm, I'm thinking maybe right around, starting at Contour 99, going down to, you know, 97, 96 and a half.
I could make a tree or, you know, below 90, the Contour 98.
Yeah, maybe from 98 down to 96 and a half.
You know, that, that's, that's pushing it, you don't, definitely don't want anything, you know, much closer than 20, 30 feet from the house.
That makes sense, yeah, that's, that's reasonable, yeah, okay.
Okay, any other questions from the planning board right now, before we open it up to the public again?
No.
Jeff, you're muted.
Great, I'm sorry, and I think this is just important because I think if we can have this discussion and then circle back to the butters, it might just be a tiny bit helpful. So the other section of the zoning that I think is important to look at, a lot of it is relatively straightforward. But before we turn back and, and get further discussion, there's one more section that deals with landscaping and it came up during the first hearing, so I just put it on the screen and so it's the section B. So, you know, this is that, this is considered a multi-family dwelling because it's more than one duplex, separated from adjacent properties by buffer strips consisting of trees or in our fencing to minimize the visual and noise impact. So this is switching sides of the project towards the driveway. There's a row of arborvitae shown, and there was a discussion last time about a fence versus arborvitae. So this is the section that the planning board has to, you know, make a couple of findings in. So, you know, it does say here that it shall be at least 10 feet in width and contain a screen of plants. You know, the screen shall not be less than five feet in width, six feet in height at the time of occupancy, individual trees and shrubs shall be planted as close as necessary to visual screen, 50% are evergreens. And then the last sentence is that a solid wall or fence not to exceed six feet. Complemented by suitable plantings may be substituted for such landscape buffer as approved by the planning board. So the strip may be part of the yard. So my highlight was that this section requires a, a final discussion of the fence and shrubs. So if I am still sharing my screen, you know, I'll, I'll put this plan back up. So this was what I was just hoping to get some clarity on this row here, either what the applicant is proposing after discussion or what the planning board is looking for.
Are you putting the plan back up, Jeff?
Oh, is it not up?
No.
Okay, I thought it was up, sorry. Is it up now?
Yes.
Okay. So I, I don't recall exactly where the conversation ended last time, I, I recall there was a discussion of a fence. And so I guess I was ask the applicant to, to clarify what that looks like now.
The, the preference is a fence, if, if that's, the app, the applicant certainly would prefer to do a fence. It's not a worry of plants dying, getting in, you know, you know, having to be replaced or whatever. It's, it's done, it's clean and it provides a nice solid barrier for the abutters and, and also the people on the property.
And Terry, would, would you or the applicant be comfortable with the, you know, it talks about the complimentary planting sort of in and around the fencing? I mean, is that part of a plan that you guys could support?
Yeah, I'm not sure the benefit, if you put up a six-foot fence and then you've got the plantings behind it. Number one, they're not going to get great light. So they're, whatever you plant's not going to be, you know, it's not going to do super well.
Okay.
What kind of fence would we be envisioning and would it run the entire length?
It would be, you know, I guess we would envision, envision it to be like a stockade, six foot tall.
And, and run the entire length that's shown on the plan where the arborvitae's are, sort of all the way from Colonial to Plymouth?
It, it could, or, you know, whatever, you know, the, depending on what the abutters would prefer, you know, you could leave it open across the infiltration basin, the base, the infiltration basin and, and the rain garden will be initially planted with a, a grass mix, the Harmony Grass Mix. And then they can be seeded or planted with perennial plugs that will be wildflower mix that would come in annually and just get knocked down after they go to seed at the end of the year. Which can be quite attractive.
Okay. Jeff, anything else before we open this back up to the public?
No, those were, those are the key things, I just thought it would be important to have discussion on before we move forward.
All right. Want to go down your list again?
Sure. So I'm gonna try to stay the same order, and so it was the, the Goggers, Leslie Tane, Kevin Mulligan, Meg Kennedy, Peterson, Sarah McAlpine and Jennifer Bofflin. So we'll start with the, the Goggers. So based on, you know, the discussion, do, do the Goggers want to add any other comments or questions?
Yeah, hold on, Jeff. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
So I think, I think the fence, like in the plan for the arborvitae's, that should definitely be a recommendation or, you know, so we don't have to look at their, their yards and what's gone over there. I think it definitely needs to be blocked off all the way. You know, that's about all I have to say. There's a couple of trees or whatever bushes around it on, on this side, whatever it takes, you know? We just don't want to look at, at the, at the water garden, we don't want to look at a desert out there. We just, we just want to have a little bit of privacy and, and stuff like that. And it seems like it's getting to the point where everything's going to be down and we're going to have to rely on a six-foot fence to, to save, you know, our scenery, so. That's about all I can say, you know, we'll just let you guys decide what to do. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm assuming Tina was included in that, so Leslie Tane?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay. And then I apologize because I know Kevin, there, there's Kevin Mulligan and it's your alias again.
Jessica Pika.
Thank you.
Sure, I don't have any additional comments.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I have anything really specific to add to that either. I mean, I like the idea of arborvitae's over a, like a fence there, but that's it.
But we don't, we're not the abutters.
Right.
So up to Meg and Dave, what they prefer, and Tina, what they prefer. Thank you.
So then Meg, Meg Kennedy. There you are. There you are, you're good.
Okay, so I just want to thank you all for this process. And I might be speaking not for everybody, but I think that most of the people in this neighborhood don't really want a multi-unit built right here, we prefer a single family. I don't know how many of the members of the committee came out to view the site. I, I would really like to know that, how many of you actually got to see it? And I'm asking that before you vote on this, that you do visit it and picture yourself living here. And ask yourself if this is the right decision and a good decision for this neighborhood and for the city of East. and for the city of East Hampton. There were some comments about the root system being part of the problem and the word you was used is it may have caused it. I think that we need to know for sure if that was the cause of the sewage issue before we add anything. I think the word may leaves a bit of a gap. And I'd like to know for certain that that is the reason that affected the sewer system. Yes, if this is voted through, if you do decide that this is what's best for our city, I would prefer an instant barrier. I'm not opposed to neighbors, love my neighbors. However, that's just going to be a total exposure there. So I don't need any other plantings, but I would prefer an instant barrier. And just keep in mind why this special permit's needed. And again, is this the best thing for this neighborhood? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do just want to, I was looking back over the DPW letter and it wasn't conditional about the cause. I mean, he has stated it is important to note that roots have been the cause of the problems there and not capacity issues. So I think there's some hope that there was some language in here about additional flow may help the problems. But as far as the actual cause, the DPW at least is confident that it's a root issue and not a capacity issue.
Okay. The word may was used, that's all.
Yeah.
And maybe we've got the choice of words, got that, but thank you.
Thank you. Brenda?
I had a question for Meg. I just wanted to be clear about what your preference was for the barrier. Would you prefer a fence if this is happening? Would you prefer the fence or the arborvitae solution?
I would prefer the fence because the arborvitae's could take many years. Okay. This is, this is my view right here. There's the marker, okay? And this is my yard. I, I have a little pool that goes up there. I've got a garden here. And again, I'm not opposed to neighbors. I love my neighbors and I've lived in this town forever. So that's not the question, but I would like some privacy. I, I I knew there was a possibility of a road here. I never knew there'd be a multi-unit building there when I bought this. And I've only been here two years, okay? But I've purchased several properties in this town. And had I known that a multi-unit could have gone in there, I might have changed my mind. I knew there was a possibility of a road. And I thought maybe a single family, but never multi-unit, okay? So this is not a matter of inclusion with low-income housing. This is a matter of somebody making money. With all due respect, Mr. Merrick. And again, just make the right decision for this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next person, I think Christine and Kirk were the, were saying so Kirk Peterson?
Yep, yep. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I have quite a few questions and comments. And some of them, maybe it'd be better to have kind of a question and then to get a response so that people don't lose track of what the question we were discussing. So the first question is Conservation Commission report. Just how do I get a copy of that? Do I, I don't find anything online about that.
Yeah, that should be something that can be obtained. If you give me one minute, if you want to, if you want to go on to your next question, I will, I'll confirm the date of that hearing, which will help us get you that information.
Okay. Next question was about parking. So I understand each unit has parking allotted for two cars, one in the garage, one on the driveway parked in front of the garage. What happens if a family moves in that has three cars? Has three people, say two parents and a kid that's driving, what happens to the third car? And is it, can we put a restriction on the property that people can only have two cars? And if that's true, how's that enforced? Next question is stormwater related. So the infiltration basin and the water garden, are those both discharging into the ravine to the little stream? Or is some of that going into the storm sewer system? And if it does go into the ravine, does anyone know where that ends up in the Manhattan River?
Okay, so I think maybe, sorry Jesse, I think maybe pausing there for a second. So you know, I do know that the Conservation Commission issued a determination of non-applicability. That basically means that they got presented with a plan. They were asked if the property was within a resource area that was regulated. And they made the, it's a negative determination on September ninth, two thousand nineteen. So that is a document that I can provide, Kirk, to you by email. And I think the date in the reference of that decision will get included in the findings here. But there is a date to that. And then so maybe Terry, you still have the ability to show screens. So do you perhaps want to answer the parking question as well as the drainage question? Sorry, Jesse, is that okay?
That's totally fine. Thanks, Jeff.
So parking, you know, if somebody had a visitor or anything, for units one and two, there's actually room enough to, for basically two cars in front of the garage and a car in the garage. So you could actually theoretically have three people parking there. For three and four, you know, it would be different. Yeah, you might have to have somebody in and turn around or they'd have to park on the street like other people do.
Yeah, but parking on the streets is not allowed from November first to April first.
Right. I mean, other houses have to deal with the same thing. There's, I'm sure there are lots of, lots of houses all up and down the street that have to contend with the same thing. And people figure out where they got to put the car. You know, whether you have to put it in a garage or find a new spot for. These are only two-bedroom units. So it's not anticipated that you typically have, you know, you might have three cars, but typically two cars is what you're going to see. So we wouldn't expect that to be a real issue.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the planning board to see if they think that that's something to be concerned about.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Terry, how about the drainage issue?
Yeah, in terms of the stormwater, the infiltration basin does not discharge anywhere but into the ground.
Okay.
It has an emergency overflow, but the calculations keep it all in the basin. The rain garden does have a discharge to the ravine that is consistent with what is currently going there. It's actually a little less than what currently goes into the, into the ravine. And that's, that's the purpose of the rain garden that both reduces the flow and also treats the water then going down there.
Okay. My next question is regarding, there's two documents from the city engineer. One's dated March fifth and one's dated May nineteenth. So I'm really confused about what they're saying. Document from March fifth, the fourth paragraph says modeling estimates indicate that post-construction stormwater volumes leaving a site will increase by two hundred and seventy-four percent, one hundred and eighty-three percent and one hundred and forty-six percent for the two, ten and a hundred-year storm respectively compared to existing conditions. Is that, are those numbers? How do they, how are those numbers come up with and how do they're mitigated by your water, your infiltration pond and your water garden? Is that what the idea is?
Well, those, those numbers reflect the previous design with the, with the three buildings. If you look at the current, the most recent one, you'll see that, you'll see different numbers.
I don't see those percentage numbers in the letter. The other, so from March fifth, he's, the city engineer again in paragraph four states, standard two from Massachusetts Stormwater Regulations requires that the post-development peak discharge rate is equal to or less than the pre-development rate from the two-year and ten-year twenty-four hour storms. Okay? But then in the May nineteenth document from the city engineer, he says, while the stormwater modeling indicates that the stormwater volume leaving a site is increased during the two-year storm, they are conserved in both a ten-year and hundred-year storm. So it seems to me what he's saying is that the two-year storm has increased. And therefore it does not meet the Massachusetts Stormwater Regulations.
Well, it does meet the stormwater regulations because this Massachusetts Stormwater Regulations actually don't talk to volume at all. Basically, the Massachusetts Stormwater Regulations talk to specific recharge volumes that are required based on soil type. And that's all covered in the stormwater report. And you will note that I believe in his note that, you know, it showed a very small increase in volume for the two-year event. We've tried to accommodate that, but that is not actually part of the Massachusetts Stormwater Regulations.
So what you're saying is that his statement in the March fifth document, the paragraph four, that you're saying that that his statement is not accurate?
It's not accurate to the Massachusetts Stormwater Regulations, yes.
Are you saying that he's, his statement in the May nineteenth document saying that the stormwater volume leaving the site is increased during the two-year storm? Is that accurate?
Yes, it has a slight increase on the two-year event. There's a difference between volume and, and flow. So the volume is over time. Okay, the flow is at a peak flow. So when we look at stormwater under the stormwater regulations, we're looking at flow that's actually leaving the site that's going to impact runoff in a general storm event. The whole purpose of designing basins and such is to prevent flooding of downstream areas. So.
Okay. My next question is based on the special permit, East Hampton zoning ordinance special permit, description of the special permit. And it's section twelve dot seven dot five dot one L. So the, the special permit requirement states that section twelve dot seven dot five, that all the following requirements shall be included in the application. And L is quote, the landscape plan showing all existing natural features including let's see, major trees, forest cover and water sources and all proposed changes to these features, including size and type of plant material. Water sources will include ponds, lakes, brooks, streams, wetlands, floodplains, drainage retention areas. Okay, so I guess my question is which document that was submitted with the application is the landscape plan as required here?
That would be the planting and landscape.
Is that, is that in the site development plan?
Yes.
One of the maps in the site development plan? Is that, is that page two? On the site development plan?
That is, I believe, page four on the site plan.
And I think there is, I think there are some components of this in the existing conditions plan. So some of the existing features get shown in the existing conditions and then the, there's a proposed plan. I don't know.
Well, this, now this is saying that.
Page has the layout and planting plan, so that has the proposed changes on it.
Right, I understand that. Where is the landscape plan showing all the existing natural land features, major trees, forest cover, et cetera?
Would be the existing conditions plan.
That's page two.
That would be two, yes.
So then my question is there are no, the only trees that I see on this existing plan are, I see two. The giant, the giant maple on the corner there and then another one that's at the end of Colonial Avenue, apparently another, well, a fourteen-inch maple apparently. So, so the question is, what is a major tree?
Typically around two feet.
And where's that definition come from?
I don't think there is a specific definition in the zoning. That's generally a rule of thumb.
Does the, does the planning board know if there's a definition of a major tree?
I don't believe there's a definition in the zoning bylaws for this context.
The question is, what is a major tree?
Yes. So I did a, I did a
Where is that definition coming?
Sorry, I think we
Getting some sort of feedback, feedback loop here.
Yeah, I, I think we care that, sorry.
Okay, so I looked up, you know, I don't know where to look for this, but I did a quick search on Google. Law Insider has it, major tree means a tree which at maturity has a trunk diameter excessive of four inches. So I guess my, so my question is why are there no trees indicated anywhere on this site? On this map?
That would not be the standard for any survey.
It says right here, it says a landscape plan showing all existing natural land features, major trees is required for special permit application.
As I said, the standard is not four inches. The standard would be anywhere twenty to two feet. Be what most people would consider a major tree.
As I want to bring, so I just want to bring this to the attention of the planning board that there are no major trees apparently on this site.
This, Mr. Peterson, this is not an atypical plan for what we would get for a special permit. Other specific trees that you're thinking about that?
No, well, no, because I can't get on site, obviously. But I mean, you can look into the woods with binoculars or whatever and see that there are many trees that are, you know, it's hard to judge. You know, but there's many trees that are certainly a foot or more in diameter.
I guess I would ask, what is the point of that question?
The point of the question is that the regulations state that if the major trees need to be on the map.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's a fair observation, Kirk. I think, I think the way that I would move this forward is, is that I think from my understanding that all the trees on the property are proposed to be removed.
I understand that, yeah.
So I think, I think that that's, I think that's something that the planning board has to make sure that the planning board understands. So I think where we have more specific, and I think this is obvious now because we have the tree warding here, but I think where there are specific requirements are on the, in the street right of way. And then the general, you know, site development is what the planning board looks at. So from my understanding, I would ask, I guess I would ask the chair that, that is the understanding at this point that, that the trees are by and large removed from this property to accommodate the structures, the driveway and the grading. Right. And then there's a proposal for replacement plantings that's on that page five of the planning.
Okay. But this really gets back down to the pretty much clear cutting of the whole lot, which is again, going back to the special permit regulations. The criteria for approval, twelve dot seven dot nine. So twelve dot seven dot nine dot I, minimization of the area over which existing vegetation is to be removed or tree removal is required, special attention is getting the plant of infringement trees. So I mean, this is, this is supposed to be, you know, a special permit is held to higher standards. So the what is the, what is the justification for clear what is the, what is the justification for clear cutting the lot in order to grant this special permit?
I'm not sure if that's quite the, the situation. I mean, the, the idea with that section of the special permit bylaw is that in light of the proposal, how can we minimize the removal of tree cover? So obviously you need to remove the trees to build what you're building, and that's part of our consideration. And part of it as well is replacing, you know, looking at efforts to replace trees where possible. So a lot of the stuff that has to be cleared has to remain cleared so that we can do the runoff and so they can build the property, but there's opportunities, we've talked about already with the applicant as far as putting in trees afterwards or preserving trees in certain areas where we can. So that's, that's one of the things we're tasked with under the bylaw is, is making every effort to not just say they've asked to clear the whole lot, they can clear the whole lot. We need to look at sort of what they can preserve and what they can't, which we've had some of those conversations already with the applicant about that tonight, and that's going to be part of our ongoing discussion for sure.
I mean, I think if I could just add one, one thought to Jesse's was, is that there have been a couple of discussions of additional plantings. And so, you know, I, I don't know yet whether the planning board is going to want to see those planting areas shown on a plan. You know, it is getting later. And so often at this point, we, we do have a discussion about having the applicant come back one more time with final plans. Kirk, is, I, I would just ask, is there an, is there a specific area that we, that hasn't been discussed that you think replacement of trees would be, you know, something that the planning board should consider? That's, that's really where I read that section I, I think it was I. And the finding is, is there is an observation that trees will be cleared, and then the planning board does have some ability to talk to the applicant about replacement trees. Is there any areas in particular?
Well, it seems like this clearly like water problem on the, on the property because we're having to do, having to do all this, the retention pond, or not retention, the infiltration pond and the rain garden. And so in order to put in these water control features, you're cutting down all the trees, but that seems self-defeating to me because trees control water and erosion in themselves.
Yeah, it's definitely a little bit of a double-edged sword, which is that the state stormwater standards actually require those features being installed along with the redevelopment. So, so I guess, you know, the question is to Terry and Walter. You know, we, we talked about, I put up, is my screen shared with the proposed, with the proposed layout? Yeah, so, you know, the area, I think, Chris Cockshaw mentioned the idea of plantings between unit one and the rain garden. You know, and then, you know, where else, you know, are there going to be trees planted on the site? And is there anything else that, you know, the applicant would consider adding to, to replace trees loss?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I think we talked a little about planting some trees between the basin and the rain garden. I would love to see, you know, Terry, if you could put something on the plan to estimate how many trees you think you could get in there? If it would become a healthy wooded area, it sounds like from what Meg said, some of the trees on the line don't look so healthy. So I'm curious, Terry, if, you know, the applicant could come up with a revised planting plan to show all of us, you know, how many trees and what kind of trees you, you could maybe put there in those two places.
I agree.
I think the flip side of that, Terry, is I think maybe when you go out and look at this, there may be trees that you could also preserve and not have to take down. And so if you look at it with that in mind, so we can sort of have a plan to look at that shows the fence replacing the arborvitae and also what we could do to preserve or replace as many trees as possible.
We can certainly look at that. We did look at it in terms of trees that are of value, and most of what's out there is scrub. You know, not great specimens, not, not straight standing stuff. And because it is a wooded lot, the canopy typically is really high in all those trees. So trying to save single ones, often you don't end up with a great specimen. So. But we can certainly look into that and look at, you know, while and I can get together and see about what we can do to add some, some fill-in trees between the, the rain gardens and between the, the rain garden and, and unit one.
I think that'd be great. Mr. Peterson, did you have any other questions?
Oh, I mean, I did also want to draw the, the board's attention to, you know, I, I take walks in the neighborhood and, and the house to the northwest, 27 Colonial Ave has done a lot of work over the years of trying to control water on their property. Digging up the yard, putting in underground pipes, having a hole in the ground which fills up with water and overflows into the storm sewer. So there's clearly, there's clearly a lot of water underground in the area. Are these units going to have basements?
Molly, do you want to speak to?
Yes, they're going to have basements and they'll have footing drains installed to drain water. Any groundwater reoccur.
Okay, I, I certainly would not want to have a basement on that lot. So I think that's, I got one more question. Hold on a second.
Oh, yes, so, so for the stormwater, I think Jeff, you said that there was a determination of non-applicability. So basically, and so when I was reading the stormwater handbook, it said for multifamily with a cold water fishery, then you did need it to be a, to get whatever you would call it, a permit or whatever. And that you would need to follow the best management practices for cold water fisheries. And I checked with Andrea Donlin at Connecticut River, Connecticut River Group. And she, well, she, she pointed that out to me that it is applicable. So how do you, how, how can we go along if the, if the Conservation Commission didn't require something that might be required? So the cold water fishery is, you know, for the Manhattan River, you know, they, they invested a lot of money with the fish ladder. So I mean, for information, you could contact Andrea. She knows far more about it than I do.
Yeah, so the, the Conservation Commission looks at all of the regs and they look at the specific environmental factors on site and they make that determination about applicability or not. That's, that's not a planning board decision.
You know, so, so.
Can I just make another comment? I'm sorry, is that the determination of none, of non-applicability is to, is to the wetland, meaning that this project doesn't impact the wetland or natural resources on the site or adjacent to the site. So basically what they're saying is that this has not, it does not impact well and or resources. The, the, the stormwater regs are different, that the stormwater regs are, are not, actually, I don't believe in the Conservation Commission's purview, that's a city engineer. So that's a different, go ahead.
The, the stormwater regs would come into the Conservation Commission's purview if it were a regulated project under the Wetlands Act. So the, the stormwater regulations come from the state standards that are related to wetlands.
So it, it, that, in answer your question, the stormwater regs still apply. It's just that there's been a determination that the Conservation Commission or by the Conservation Commission that this does not impact any wetlands. So it's a different kind of determination. But the stormwater regs definitely still apply, which is part of their application and what we've looked at.
Oh, so the planning board is looking at the stormwater.
Yes, that's before the.
Okay, okay. So, so for a multifamily with a cold water fishery, so I guess, so I guess this is, this is all related to the, to the disturbance of the lot with the cold water fishery. So I, you know, we've all seen sites that are bulldozed and clear cut. And, you know, there's, there's erosion and now you have, you have a, a cold water fishery. So it's, so, so it becomes more difficult to, and that's why these best management practices for cold water fisheries. I don't understand them all, but I just wanted to point it out because you know, it's a really important resource for all of us and the animals.
Right.
And so that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Jeff, you snuck away for a little bit, but you're back.
I had a heart attack. I lost, I dropped off. I thought everybody, I thought.
We can behave ourselves for a little while while you're not here. It's okay.
So I'm, I'm a little sad. I don't have anything more to say. Thank you, thank you for, for your patience and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Thanks for the planning board. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Great. So a couple more people, Sarah McAlpine and then John Coughlin.
This is Jim Coughlin.
Yeah, sorry, Jim. Yeah.
No problem. I don't really have a, a question for the board or the contractor. But we moved into the neighborhood a little over three years ago. And we love the quiet nature, nature of the neighborhood, the fact that it's majority, the majority of the houses are single family. We love the buffer from the, that the woods on the property create from Route 10 and potential future development of that property off of Route 10. And I just question the value of the project to the town and to the neighborhood. It will, I think, transform the neighborhood into something that it currently is, is not. And so I, I see, I see it as us trading a significant buffer and several trees in the neighborhood for a six-foot fence or row of arborvitae's. And I also have concerns about public safety. As you exit this neighborhood onto Route 10, it can be very dangerous, especially during rush hour. This project could add between 12 and 16 additional cars in the neighborhood, depending on the occupancy of the development. And I just see it as a public safety issue in terms of people exiting Alden Street onto Route 10. Because we deal with it every day in this neighborhood and it's only going to get worse. So those are my comments. No real specific questions. I just wanted to make my voice heard.
Thank you, Mr. Coughlin. Okay, is there anybody else that has any other comments or questions at this point?
Hi, Sarah McAlpine.
Oh, hi, Sarah.
Hi, sorry, I couldn't unmute earlier. I was.
No problem.
So I want to thank you guys for all of your deliberations and close attention to this project. And also to reiterate, sort of Meg's charge to the board to physically visit the site and, and maybe consider what the gentleman just said about changing the nature of this neighborhood and thinking about increase in traffic. As I stated last time we met, I have an infant and there are other kids on the street and several of the homes on this street, of which I believe there are eight addresses, colonial addresses. So this would be adding four, which is a significant percentage increase, not only of addresses, but of cars. Many of the homes currently occupied here are single car homes to begin with. And so adding you know, eight bedrooms at the end of the street would affect the entire length of colonial with a significant traffic increase. And I had asked last week if there could be any observation done of the increase of the traffic on Colonial itself. Not the comparison from the wooded lot to the settled lot and not necessarily, because we already have it, the comparison onto Route 10. But just Colonial itself and for all of the citizens here on this, on this part of the street. I do think that parking should be looked at by the planning board specifically on the end of Colonial, because now that Sanders Street is discontinued, all extra visitors, extra cars of, of residents at the new duplexes would be essentially right outside my front door and there is not a lot of space here. And so I think just imagining what that traffic would look like when those driveways are added, when, and there's a fire hydrant at the end as well, that would block parking accessibility there. And I just, I wonder, and this isn't, I don't know how to phrase it in terms of challenging the, the bylaws or anything like that, but others have spoken to the questions of clear cutting, which and of adding multifamily homes. And I just wonder if the board would consider reducing the applicant availability to build one multifamily home, one duplex on this lot instead of two multifamily dwellings on this narrow lot that does affect both of these streets in this small neighborhood. I'm not opposed to neighbors, as Meg said, and I do think there's value in increasing rental housing and condos and affordable housing for neighbors. But cramming a bunch of families down on the end of this lot, the end of this, these streets in this narrow lot, doesn't seem like a great fit for the city. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to that last point, you know, we don't, we don't have a whole lot of discretion with zoning bylaws in the city of East Hampton or in any town or city in Massachusetts. So these are, you know, written through a process that involves the city council, and then we are tasked with enforcing them and, and evaluating projects as they come in. So the, the multifamily section of our bylaw has been in place for years and it's basically, you know, a, a development option that is by right if they meet certain qualifications and, and take enough things into consideration. So we don't really have the discretion to say no multifamily here, because that's not what our bylaws say and we are bound by our bylaws. So that is not an option, but a lot of these other concerns that you folks have raised are things that we look at and talk about with these projects all the time. And so it's very valuable to get on the ground, feedback from people. Brenda, you have a question?
I have a question for Terry. Is that okay?
Yeah.
I was curious in the prior plan when there were three duplexes and you reduced it to the two duplexes. What was your thinking in terms of having them both come off Colonial versus one come off Colonial and the other come off Plymouth? Or in other words, keeping the third one that was in the southwest corner and getting rid of, you know, the one up in the north and the north corner? Because I did do a, a site visit and Colonial is a very narrow street. I had trouble, you know, turning around at the end. There's no roundabout or anything like that. And I too was having a hard time. There are four houses essentially, four households at the end of that street. And when, you know, COVID goes away and life is normal again and families are coming over for July 4th or Christmas or Thanksgiving, I was having a really hard time because all the other people will also have family there. I was just wondering how that's really going to work in practice and I could see it sort of becoming a, a problem for neighbors. Because it's really tight there. But, so I was just curious about, you know, what about the scenario of one duplex off of Colonial and one duplex off of Plymouth at, at the bottom there? Was that considered?
Not really. The, the topography of, of the site really lends itself to wanting to have, you know, you want to put your stormwater down gradient of your impacted areas so that water can run to it.
But the third duplex was proposed to go there.
There was, there was also a subsurface infiltration basin right before.
I, I didn't quite hear you. What? There was also what?
There was a, a subsurface infiltration basin that was just below that, that. There was a subsurface infiltration basin that was just below that that third unit.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't. I don't know what that means or how.
So instead of the infiltration basin, there were buried chambers that the stormwater would go into.
Oh, okay. But a duplex could go, could have gone there.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just thinking about the reducing the density of what's happening at the end of colonial with four households being added there. If if it were only two households being added there and two households being added on Plymouth, I I know it's probably more expensive and everything, but it would reduce a little bit the density on colonial, which might make those people happy. But adding one at the end of Plymouth might, you know, not be so great for the neighborhood there. I was just wondering if you'd considered that as a possibility, just to help reduce some of the density that's happening on colonial. Doesn't help getting out on Route 10 because of course Plymouth doesn't go to Route 10, but I don't know, just a thought.
It's a dead end street and the entire street is very dense in terms of how it's been developed over the years. You know, and and we did, we did do the trip generation and talked to it. And so, yeah, while you might have, you know, if you figure you've got eight, eight potential cars, you know, or, you know, even if you had, you know, a couple extras, say 10, you know, your your trips are are fairly minimal at the peak hours. So, you know, those are 10 cars that are going throughout the day, not not all at once. So you don't notice it. And that's, that's why when we look at it, we look at it as as not being a significant impact in terms of traffic. There is full off-street parking for all of the house, for all the units. So you wouldn't, you wouldn't typically be expecting, you know, a lot of cars parked on the street either.
Thanks, Terry. Okay, I think since we're coming up on eight o'clock here, I think that probably we should continue this. Also, in light of wanting to see, you know, that revised planting plan that I think, Terry, we talked about with showing the the fence and what we can save and what we can replace. So i- if nobody on the planning board has any objections, I'd take a motion to continue to the 16th.
Before you do that, Jesse, I'm sorry. The the one that I think, you know, there was a lot of items raised. I think that's perfect. That's the purpose of this. The one item that I would just want to have a quick conversation about because I think between now and the next hearing, I think we can get some clarity. You know, we have the sort of the the vestigial Standis Street. So so it's a vestige. It's an old, you know, right of way. There have been some discussions with the applicant's attorney and the city attorney about, you know, having them go forward with a discontinuance. And so there's agreement to do that. I have been trying to get clarity on exactly the mechanics of that process. And what the city attorney, you know, and I can provide some of this as background for the next meeting, but the city attorney is basically very comfortable with the planning board. If you were choosing to approve this, that there would be a condition that the applicant, you know, successfully discontinue the way through city council. And and the, you know, our professional opinion of this is that the city does not have an interest in making a road here. So, you know, DPW has no interest in in seeing a road developed here. And the city council, I think, will will, I think there's not really a contention to keep it, but we wanted to formalize the process and have it formally discontinued. So so between now and the next meeting, I think it would allow me, if the planning board is agreeable, to craft a condition you know, that the applicant sees and the city attorney sees to make sure that it's going to work out and allow this process to potentially finish and then have that discontinuance kind of run concurrently. It's going to take, you know, probably a couple of months to get it fully through city council. So I don't know if there are questions about that, but that's generally what what was agreed upon as a as an approach to to.
Yeah, I think that makes perfect sense, Jeff. I it does. It's not the kind of thing that I think we would need the applicant to get cleared up before we would issue a decision. I think assuming we you know, satisfy all the concerns, I think we can make that a condition. Obviously, they're not going to be able to build there if that road is still there anyway.
Right. All right. So that so then I think whenever we have the continuation, you know, I think that I will be able to provide an outline of, you know, the the decision, kind of the findings that the planning board needs to make to to finish the process. I think there's a revised landscaping plan. And, you know, a condition about the tree protection. So so I think I just wanted to air those thoughts so I I can come to the board with some some written information to review at the next meeting.
Okay. Terry, if we continue this to the 16th, does that give you enough time to do what we've talked about for revised plans? Or would you rather have it go another?
No, 16th is fine.
Okay. All right. Can I get a planning board member to make a motion? Preferably one that's not on mute.
I can second the motion.
So I move to to not postpone.
Continue.
Continue. Thank you. Move to continue the hearing for Colonial Ave, map 128 parcel 121 to the 19th, did we say 17? I'm sorry. I'm so bad at this. The 16th of June at 6:00 PM.
Can I get a second? All right. All right. So we'll do a roll call vote. So all those in favor, first Jesse Belcher to me. Aye. Chris Cockshaw.
Aye.
Brenda Salier.
Aye.
Austin Sanders.
Aye.
Harry Schuman. You're muted again, Harry.
I knew it would have been a host.
How do you vote, Harry?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. So everyone who's still on here, this will be continued until the 16th. We'll hopefully have a revised planting plan and some other stuff that we can discuss. And by all means, find your way here in your usual method.
Right. And just to reiterate, that'll be on the agendas. So the agendas in minutes section of the website, the planning board agenda will have the the link. So we're still new at this. So.
We're working on it. All right. So we have a little bit more business. Anyone else who doesn't want to listen to this is free to leave or you can stick around. We have review and discuss possible zoning amendments to remove the site plan review process for changes of use within existing buildings in the downtown business district. Jeff, take it away.
Thank you. So I will screen share in a moment, but so actually, maybe I'll pull up the memo because it will give me some guidance here. Okay. There have been discussions along the way about the permit requirements in the downtown business district. So currently, you know, if if a new use is proposed in a in a building in in the downtown business district, which is, you know, generally speaking, it's Cottage Street, Union Street and Main Street. You know, most uses, the large majority of uses require what's called plan approval. So it's equivalent to site plan approval through the planning board. And there have been, so in my times, you know, here, there have been quite a few of those applications that have come to the planning board for the plan approval. And, you know, a couple of things have occurred in those times. There have been board members who have questioned kind of, you know, the 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 need for the planning board approval, especially one of the key factors is that if you are occupying an existing building in the downtown and not adding any additions or second stories, then then the use doesn't, is not required to provide parking anywhere on site. And so there have been a lot of discussions about that being really beneficial, you know, to to allowing, especially if you look on Cottage Street is a really good example of the very small storefronts in those rows of buildings where it really wouldn't be possible for them to provide parking. And I think the last thing that, you know, as a city, we would want to do is start demolishing buildings to build parking for each use. So so the planning board process has been pretty limited in scope. So one thing that, you know, I think I am starting to be concerned about in 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 response to the COVID-19 stuff is that if if a business is, you know, unfortunately required to shut down during this time, you know, we wanted to try to reduce barriers to getting a new business to occupy those storefronts in the downtown. And so the example that I have currently, you know, just in front of me and and as I drive through town is the the closure of Puffer Printing. So Puffer Printing actually takes takes up two spaces on Union Street. They're side by side. And right now, you know, for for someone to, they're listed for lease, you know, by Taylor, Taylor Realty. For someone to go into those spaces, unless it's the same exact use, they would be required to, you know, prepare an application with with some some floor plans and information about the use, pay pay the $100 application fee plus a legal ad. And so I did make note in the in the form and in the memo that, you know, those fees are in total about $400 and the process takes about two months. And I'm a little bit concerned with our process probably potentially taking a little bit longer due to COVID. So what I'm putting out for discussion is this amendment, which would really seek to streamline permitting for new businesses in the downtown business area. This this is modeled after zoning that the town of Amherst has in their downtown where there have been good examples of this facilitating turnover in a quicker way and make it a little bit less burdensome for new businesses to to, you know, get into a storefront. I think what's not listed in here is that most applicants have to go through the building inspector for these uses anyway. So the building code is always, you know, part of the equation. And the building inspector, you know, administers the, you know, the ADA requirements, so Americans with Disabilities Act. If there were questions about, you know, exits or fire protection, the fire department is queued up through the the building permit process. And then, you know, anything with food is regulated through the through the health department. So so in a lot of these cases, you know, we had Poke Bowl came in and, you know, they they, you know, spent a couple of months, you know, in the permitting process and paid and in the plan, in the planning board, and it was great because everyone basically said, this is great. You know, where are you going to put your trash? And they had, you know, the dumpster out back and and then, you know, it was, it was a pretty straightforward request. And so what I'm, what I'm trying to do is be as responsive as I can. I think aside from giving businesses money, because I think that that's one of the key things that's happening right now is is a loss of income is is really devastating. And we don't really have a lot of ability to just do that. So so that was where I started to think about what could we do to help facilitate getting, you know, if if a if a storefront does go vacant, what can we do to make it easier to go and fill it? And so, you know, what I was hoping was that there was some discussion of this. We can go through the zoning and look at the table of uses, but you know, there are a couple of uses that require a special permit in the downtown business district, and I think we would propose to keep that the same. And I think one of the examples would be a cannabis, you know, retail store is still regulated by special permit. I think that we've seen still that there's enough nuances with that type of use that, you know, that would be at least the proposal going through would would keep that a special permit. But small retail establishments, restaurants, you know, a copy shop. And there's a whole list of uses that would be plan approval. So I'm sure there's a couple of questions and I would open it up to questions, but I wanted to kind of bring this up tonight to see what the what the general response was of the planning board and see if there was some, you know, consideration to move this forward kind of quickly to to try to be responsive for these storefronts that, you know, we're seeing a couple go vacant and there are a couple that are still vacant. So.
Yeah. And just for the new people and anyone who's listening, so the process for how we do this is, you know, we would propose a potential change to the bylaw that goes to city council. They would vote on whether to consider it basically and would schedule a joint hearing with the ordinance subcommittee and the planning board, and then it would go back to city council for final approval. So it's a multi-step process with a bunch of different times where we have hearings and joint hearings and get public input. And the city council does the same. But so that's sort of the the question here is sort of whether we want to get the ball rolling and submit it to city council and start that process. And Jeff and I had talked about this a little bit last week. I was trying to think of any situations where there were issues that this wouldn't catch because that's my lawyer brain working. And I think the only one that I even mentioned was sort of, it almost flips the thing on its head because then I think the only potential conflict is places that have existing parking. And may, there may be some oversight needed there, but most of the times when that's been an issue, like when we did Union Street Bistro, is because they were doing external alterations outside that sort of changed that and made us want to work on the redesign of the parking and the driveway. So it may not even be an issue and it may even be something that we could just literally think in our heads of what the existing places are and realize that it's not an issue. But I think most of this stuff really does end up being routine and kind of pointless for our oversight. We don't have much to add and it's going to stay the same way it is. It's just different business on site.
I have a process question. So it, can it get rewritten and revised and edited throughout the whole process?
Yes.
Okay.
So we historically, at least recently, we've tried not to worry too much about that at this stage because it goes to city council, comes back to us with ordinance, you know, there's something later this month, we're going to have a joint hearing with ordinance about a proposal. So we'll go through that process too. So there's there's plenty of opportunity for amending it. Sometimes we want to work on that now and sometimes we don't, but I think this is pretty straightforward to at least get the ball rolling and we can sort of think about what issues come up. That would be my thought.
I just had a question for Jeff. Is this meant to be a temporary emergency measure only during the COVID thing or you see this being permanent?
I think that's a great question. I guess the, I I I think initially it was a permanent change. What I had hoped to do for tonight, which I will certainly do in advance of a joint public hearing, is go through at least what I have available for the past three years and just kind of give an overview. You know, I really hope to throw up an an image of the storefront and then show the decision and the timeline that was attached to each one. I think that it would be a permanent proposal. And I think there are the two things that maybe I didn't mention is that I think for for the purposes of this proposal would be just the downtown business district. And I think, you know, it's these cases where you can go into an existing building without any real significant changes other than signs. And so that's really kind of that threshold where if they needed to, like, I think Jesse's example of the bistro, you know, we we'd probably have to talk about a couple of examples of what might trip the actual process and keep it in the plan approval. But, you know, exterior, you know, you know, changes that are significant, you know, that might still require approval. But if you look at Puffers Printing, you know, they they are ripe to be reoccupied by someone. So, you know, right now, the way that I'm just trying to observe this is that, you know, we might be able to come up with a zoning amendment in the next month or month and a half, and that would actually be faster than if they had to apply to the planning board. And I'm just concerned that we might see more of this before we kind of come out of of whatever we're we're in right now. So.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Austin.
So so Jeff, you're saying that you're gonna write recommendations for percentage of a facade change, for example?
That's a good question, too. I mean, I'm I'm not sure. I think that that's where there is some discussion to this. But I didn't get that far with with the concept. I think you know, we had one proposal, for example, and I don't mean to put anyone on the spot, but, you know, a little while back, the the establishment Gigantic, you know, wanted to. the, the establishment Gigantic, you know, wanted to replace their fixed window with an opening window. So like a lot of places have open air, you know, areas. And we, we should probably run through a couple of examples as we do this of what might be significant and what might not be significant. That doesn't really change the use or the way that the inside is used. So, you know, plan approval, the, the plan approval itself is kind of uses that are normal and expected. Planning board, generally speaking, doesn't really have a lot of opportunity to, to deny such a use. So you do have kind of some box, you know, some framework to work within. I think it's a great question. I did not think about it that far through.
Yeah, I think it's a good question too. I was, I would think like, like a Hari and Skari, I would definitely want to see something like that if there was a revised plan or revised idea. Or even like the Moriarty, I think that's what it's called, property next to.
Right.
You know, like that, that, that is in downtown business. And if, if those get, if there's a proposal there, I think that would be important and significant enough to come to us. But yeah, if Gigantic goes and another bar goes in, I don't need to see that. Right.
Right. Yeah. So I think we definitely would need to fine tune it. I don't, I don't, I'm not sure that it can be the sentence that we're talking about right now. But I think this gives it enough scope that we're putting the world on notice for what we would be discussing with the ordinance subcommittee and the city council. Harry, any thoughts? Not to make you unmute yourself again, but just asking.
He's almost there. Five, five more seconds. He's got it. Come on, Harry.
You there? Harry, I am muted. You can talk now.
No, no, it was because of what's going on up there.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, until things get back to normal, it doesn't make any difference what's going on. You can't approve anything because nothing can open up. Things are so much different, the things are so much different up there than they are down here. I mean, it's just like night and day.
Yeah, I think one of the things I like about this is I think it does have like a COVID response component to it. But as Brenda was getting at, I, I actually think that this makes sense, you know, six months ago and it'll make sense in five years. I think it's sort of trying to eliminate some of the sort of hoops that people have to jump through for what is relatively small change is, is a good thing. And the more we can do that, the better.
Didn't, didn't we, uh, didn't we go about something like this about two or three years ago? We're going to streamline the process and the planner and, you know, maybe yourself are going to get together with, with the East End police and the fire and pass some of these, uh, businesses, what, what happened, what happened at hearing and all that? And we hadn't been down this road once.
I mean, I think we're always trying to reduce that stuff, right? So like the more of it we reduce, it just gets us looking at more things that we can do to make it easier. I don't think that they're like competing proposals. It's just that there's different ways to do it and you can keep making it easier.
Yeah, I think, you know, I wasn't here then, but I recall some of those discussions just as a resident. I remember hearing some of those discussions that it, it's like a, an administrative approval process.
Right.
So what I will do as part of my homework is, is dig back in and see if there were, you know, ideally, fingers crossed, some criteria kind of already kind of maybe established that might help us frame like what's substantial and what's not substantial. Because that, that seems like, and, and maybe, you know, I don't want to make this a, a giant discussion, but maybe have some discussions with the building inspector to understand what, what he would call substantial so that we have some kind of bumpers, you know. I, I will like, I would like to use the idea of the window, like opening up the, you know, making the window change. You know, that to me is not substantial to, to the, to what the use is. But I think we have to run a couple of scenarios about what, what might be. So.
I think that makes sense.
Okay.
All right. So I would take a motion to refer this proposal to the city council if anyone wants to make it.
I'll try.
Go for it, Brenda.
Yeah, I make a motion that we, um, refer this, so help me out here. What was it that you said?
You're going to, we're going to refer this proposed amendment to the city council for consideration.
Yes. So I want to make a motion that we refer this to the city council for the downtown business permitting amendment. Is that sufficient?
Perfect. Can I get a second? A second? All right.
All right.
A roll call vote again, starting with me. Uh, all those in favor, aye. I am in favor. Chris Cockshaw?
Aye.
Brenda Salier?
Aye.
Austin Sanders?
Aye.
Harry Schuman?
Aye.
All right. Well done.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. I think it's, I think it's important. And so I appreciate you taking this up and then, you know, making the recommendation. It's still, it's got to go to city council, then comes back to, it comes back. So.
We've got more time to talk about this.
Yep.
All right. Excellent, guys. It's been a long night. Thank you all very much. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Jesse Belcher to me, aye. Chris Cockshaw?
Aye.
Brenda Salier?
Aye.
Austin Sanders?
Aye.
Harry Schuman?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all. Have a good night. Jeff?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.